Good afternoon and welcome. My job is a simple one, and that's to welcome you all and to welcome our Attorney General. We don't often have an opportunity to host a constitutional officer in Pasadena, a small city, but we are grateful for his being here. The state government has a tremendous impact on every city in California, as you know. They pass a lot of legislation, and it cascades down on us. Most of it is useful, all of it's well-intentioned, but frequently it's confusing and it takes us a while to absorb it. And it turns out that the Attorney General's office is in a key position to help us sort of sift through some of this. The Voter Participation Rights Act is an act that compels cities to change their dates of their elections. We've been waiting for almost a year for determination as to whether or not that applied to Pasadena as a charter city. And the Attorney General's office, and I appreciate very much your expediting that for us, has rendered an opinion, not one that we're thrilled with, but the point is at least we understand what the rules of the game are. And that comes from the Attorney General's office. There's another piece of legislation recently passed called the Racial and Identity Profiling Act that deals with data collection by the police department. It's up to the A.G.'s office, as I understand it, to determine exactly what the rules of the game are going to be there and how onerous it will be for our police department to try and do that data collection, which we support. But there are a lot of ways of interpreting that, and this is the key guy, and his office is really responsible for how effectively we'll be able to do the job at the local level. So that we understand full well the significance of the Attorney General, his role in state government, and we're so grateful that he's doing this outreach here in Pasadena. So on behalf of my colleagues, Jean Masuda, Steve Madison, and Andy Wilson, and Teresa Lam-Simpson, who's here from Adam Schiff's office, and a variety of other officials, including Al-Tadena officials, we welcome you here. We hope that you'll come back again, and thank you for visiting with us. Thank you, sir. I'm blowing my most important job, which is to introduce our Assemblyman, who is our former colleague on the Pasadena City Council, a guy who knows Pasadena very well, is devoted to our well-being here, and who we trust with doing the right thing for us in Sacramento, Chris Holden.
I will lower this before I sit down. It's a pleasure to be here with you. This is a great opportunity to, as the mayor said, to have the top cop, top law enforcement official in the state, to be here in our community, to engage with our community on issues that are on your mind, to give him an opportunity to talk about and to frame his agenda and how he sees the importance of his role as Attorney General, and how he can be effective for addressing your needs and to provide leadership for you. On January 24th, 2017, Javier Becerra was sworn in as the 33rd Attorney General of the State of California and is the first Latino to hold the office in the history of the state. That's... The state's chief law enforcement officer, Attorney General Becerra, has decades of experience serving the people of California through appointed and elected office where he has fought for working families, the vitality of the Social Security and Medicare programs, and issues to combat poverty among the working poor. He is also championing the state's economy by promoting and addressing issues impacting job creation and generating industries such as health care, clean energy, technology, and entertainment. The Attorney General oversees more than 4,500 lawyers, investigators, sworn peace officers, and other employees. Attorney General Becerra previously served 12 terms in Congress as a member of the U.S. House of Representatives, one term in the California Legislature, and prior to that as the representative of the 59th Assembly District in Los Angeles. He is a former deputy Attorney General with the California Department of Justice. He began his legal career in 1984, working in a legal services office representing the mentally ill. Born in Sacramento, California Attorney General Becerra is the son of working-class parents and was first in his family to receive a four-year degree, earning his Bachelor of Arts in Economics from Stanford University, which, by the way, is the same university that our Attorney General... our Attorney General? But our city attorney went to law school. He earned his Juris Doctorate from Stanford Law School. His mother was born in Jalisco, Mexico, and immigrated to the United States after marrying his father. He is married to Dr. Carolina Reyes, and they are proud parents of three daughters, Clarissa, Olivia, and Natalia. In his six months in office, Attorney General Becerra has continued his focus on health care, the environment, and immigration. Most recently, Attorney General Becerra stood firmly against the Trump administration's sanctuary city order. Also, he has defended California's national monuments, of which includes our beautiful San Gabriel Mountains. And two days ago, in Senate Public Safety Committee, Attorney General Becerra supported Assembly Bill 284 requiring the Department of Justice to conduct a study on officer-involved shootings, a bill co-authored by myself. With that being said, it gives me a great pleasure to introduce someone who I have a great deal of respect for and a great deal of pride in, our Attorney General Javier Becerra.
Oh. I want to simply begin first by saying thank you for inviting me to be here. The invitation was extended by your great leader in the state assembly, Chris Holden, and I want to thank him personally for that, not just for his friendship, and it's been a friendship that's extended over the years, but I know he's been a leader, not just in the city, but for California. And his leadership in so many capacities within the state legislature have inured to your benefit. And when he said, you know, "I'd really like it, Javier, if at some point we could bring you down to Pasadena so you can talk to some of the folks that I represent day in and day out," I said, you know, "Name the date, let's try to make it happen." And I appreciate that Assemblymember Holden is always interested in making sure that you all have the representation you need. That's the type of person you want to see in elected office. I want to thank Mayor Tornick, all the representatives of municipal government who are here on behalf of the city of Pasadena for the work that you all do. This is a great city, and were it not for the fact that Eagle Rock and Colorado Boulevard have been rejuvenated, I'd be still coming to Old Town Pass a whole lot more. But we now have places we can eat in Eagle Rock, and so it makes it a little easier. But I look at this audience and I see some of my dear friends who are there, who I've worked with over the years in so many different ways, and it's great to see so many of you here. I see some new faces. I hope you'll ask some great questions. I look forward to talking to you. Let me simply be brief, because you've assembled a great audience. I feel very privileged to be here with so many of the people who serve you. And here, I'd like to tip my hat to the men and women who are here, who are in uniform, the police department, the fire department, for everything they do. I have a law enforcement agency within the Department of Justice. Day in, day out, the men and women, some of them who are here, part of my detail, security detail, they do everything they can to protect us. And sometimes we take for granted the work that goes into doing that, and we'll feel very comfortable having a great dialogue, because we have folks who are actually here working and making sure that we are secure. And so I want to tip my hat to them, because it's important to constantly remind them, thank you for your service. I will say just a couple of things, because I think it's important to hear from you. I was not expecting to be here. And by that I mean, I was not expecting to be here as Attorney General. But quite honestly, if you take a look back, I was raised by a father who got to the sixth grade, a mother who didn't come to this country till she was 18. I'm the first in my family to go to college. I wasn't expected to be here, but I am here, and I am going to take full advantage of the fact that I am here. And that goes to the great glory of this country, that the son of a man who couldn't walk into restaurants because of the signs that said, "No dogs or Mexicans allowed," is now representing 40 million people in the state of California, the sixth-largest economy in the world. My job is like the men and women in uniform right here, to have your back. As you all figure out how to start that new innovative business, to get that next generation of kids to college, to make sure that everyone has a chance to have decent, quality, affordable housing, to make sure that when you go to work, you don't have to stop by the food pantry on your way home so you can afford to eat dinner with your family. Every time you do something to make this place better, I just need you to know, I've got your back. That's my job as the Attorney General for the state of California. I have that power through the authority granted to me by individuals like Assemblymember Holden, and quite honestly, through the Constitution of the state of California. And so I'm going to take full advantage of the fact that I now have the authority, the power, to try to do some things to have California's back. Because right now, in many ways, the things that have made us such a great state, that have allowed us to get to the point where only five countries in the entire world, including the U.S., have more economic engine power than California by itself, we want to keep that going. We want to make sure we get to paying high wages to people who do great work. We want to make sure that we don't let any company think it's better to go some other place than to stay here. And so if we can continue to do that, protect the health care that we're providing to so many millions of Americans, and make sure that everyone has a chance to dream to be able to go to college, then we'll be in pretty good shape. And so the way I explain it to folks at the end of the day is by simply saying this: For me, the model of success is very simple. If I can do for a construction worker and a clerical worker, like my dad and mom were, what was done for them, even though they had to face adversity, but yet they were able to buy their first home, send their kids to college, and retire in dignity. If we can still say the same thing for a construction worker and a clerical worker married with a family, that they too can today dream to buy their own home, send their kids to college, and retire in dignity, then we're doing okay. And that's what I want to do, is I want to have the backs of anyone who believes that the next generation of Americans, who isn't necessarily fortunate to be the Attorney General or to have gone on to college, can believe that someone's going to have their back, so that if they didn't get there, at least their kids will. And so that's my job. We can talk about anything you want, but everything I do, whether it's in the environment, criminal justice reform, housing, consumer protection, it's with that in mind. I've got to have your back, because I got to make sure that the next generation gets to say, "Well, my parents, a sixth-grade educated construction worker and a clerical worker who didn't come to this country till she was 18, could have a chance to see their kids go to college, they can live in their own home, and they can retire in dignity." So let's talk. I thank you for being here, and I thank, again, especially Assemblymember Holden for inviting me to be here. Let's talk.
Okay, just a point of order. If you want to ask a question, just please make sure to fill out a white card and turn it in to one of our staff or interns, and they'll deliver that up to us. And as you're thinking of your questions, we do have some in already. The first one is just a general question. What is the complaint process for the Attorney General Office?
So we have what we call our Public Inquiry Unit. And so you can look on our website. We probably have something in what used to be called the Phone Book, where you can look up our numbers. You can find out how to contact our office and be in touch through our Public Inquiry Unit, where we take all complaints or information about issues that you might want the Attorney General's office to look into, investigate, and then we'll try to get back to you from there. And so that would be the best way. You can also, of course, and this may be the faster way, is you get ahold of the mayor, one of the city council members, the Assemblymember, because I do see them periodically and through them as well. You can try to communicate your concerns, and we can try to then move from there to see if we can address it.
Okay, this question is, what are you going to do to assist with, or assist more with battered women's shelters?
As the law enforcement officer, the principal role that I would play, working with our state government and our local governments that are tackling this issue, is try to make sure we're going after the folks who did the battering. Try to make sure that we try to prevent any women, or quite honestly, any human being, from being abused. And so my job is to work with the district attorneys, the city attorneys, to make sure that we're going after those who would consider committing that kind of crime. There are some other things that we can do as well. One of the priorities that I've set for my department is to start doing a more thorough investigation of all the not-for-profit organizations that are popping up, because they're proliferating. And one of the things that we're finding is that too many, they label themselves with these great names. They'll have veteran in their title, and they profess to help veterans, when in fact we find out that they're doing virtually nothing for veterans, and they're collecting your money. And so we right now are prosecuting a couple of so-called veteran charities that were doing very little to be charitable to veterans. And we're going to do as much as we can in that space. Certainly, there are organizations that are out there saying they're trying to be helpful to people, including women who have been abused. We want to make sure that if someone presents themselves, represents themselves as doing that, that that's in fact what they're doing. But working in conjunction with all the different players at the governmental level, who deal with women who've been abused, or the places that are safe houses for them, we try to make sure that on the enforcement side, we're there working with them.
We don't necessarily have an elephant in the room, but we do have a dinosaur. So why isn't California investigating ExxonMobil for its climate cover-up?
Okay, so let me try to answer this as best and as carefully as I can. That's a question that's posed more as a state, a declaration, which may not be accurate. And I say that because the Department of Justice conducts investigations, but does not publicize its investigations. Principally, you can understand that the last thing we want to do is let people know we're trying to find out what they're doing. And if we're out there saying publicly, "We're going to investigate charities that say they're veterans organizations for veterans," well, all of a sudden, they're going to start helping veterans. And so we don't announce our investigations. And I am very aware of the issue involving Exxon. For those who may not be aware, there's a concern that Exxon, along with other petroleum companies, have been misrepresenting how much they've known about climate change for quite some time, and that they present one face to the public and one face to their investors. And that in presenting two different faces, they may be committing certain crimes. For example, if they're deceiving consumers, they are subject to prosecution by the district attorneys of California or the Attorney General for deceptive practices against consumers. If they're deceiving investors, now they're committing securities fraud, and they can be prosecuted for committing securities fraud. L.A. Times did a large expose on this. There are a number of states that have begun, that are public in the investigations that are doing. And so let me be very careful, as I said, in saying that while we don't announce publicly if we are doing investigations, I'm very aware of that particular matter. Probably leaves you unsatisfied, but that's all I can say.
Okay. If the federal government attempts to remove the monuments of the San Gabriel Valley Mountains, what will you do?
Okay, so you know that right now, many of our national monuments are under threat. The Department of Interior has decided to reexamine many of these national monuments and taking away the designation, which would remove millions and millions of dollars and resources that are used to maintain some of these areas in their natural state, and would allow people to do things like mining and so forth that would otherwise not be We have filed an action in court to try to prevent the federal government from doing what we think is against the law, is retreating from what it's supposed to be doing. And so we have sued the Trump administration and the Department of Interior to halt that. But I will tell you, I could use your help, because I honestly believe we're going to win more of these matters in a court of public opinion than we will in a court of law. And we need your help, because we need to let people know in Washington, D.C., that there are people who really do care about this. The sequoias, the grand sequoias, which you can't find anywhere but here in California, that monument status is also in jeopardy for them. So we need your help.
Will you enforce the rights of California citizens to have a sanctuary state?
We're working this on two tracks. As many of you know, we have taken action in court to prevent the Trump administration from targeting cities and counties and the state for doing what the Constitution under the Tenth Amendment allows us to do, and that is to decide how we govern our communities when it comes to public safety, education, and the rest. And so the threat from the federal government to try to commandeer resources that we're entitled to, because we pay taxes, we believe we would win in court if we had to be in court, if indeed the federal government makes an effort to try to take some of our resources based on their interpretation of how we should be helping the federal government enforce immigration law. And so we are in court to make sure that we protect the rights of our state and the people of the state of California. We're also working with the legislature, and here, Assemblymember Holden is aware of this, there's legislation in the works to make sure it's... We make very clear to everyone, so there's no ambiguity, especially for law enforcement, because law enforcement is caught in the middle of this, our local law enforcement, to make sure they're aware of what they can and cannot do, because it would be unfair to leave our police and sheriff, all our law enforcement agencies in the dark on how best to be forced. They don't want to be caught up in this trap where they are accused of not doing what they should be doing vis-à-vis the federal government, and where they're accused of doing more than what the state, under our state laws, allows. And so we're trying to make sure that whatever legislation leaves the legislature and gets, hopefully gets a signature from the governor, is one that everyone is aware of, and we know our responsibilities. But let's be clear, immigration is a federal matter. We do not have jurisdiction directly over immigration. We have jurisdiction over public safety as a state. And so we have to, we have to be really clear on how we distinguish. Otherwise, we do run into preemption issues under the Constitution. But I think it's pretty clear that we're not trying to get in the way of the federal immigration authorities from doing what they can lawfully, lawfully. They're not above the law. They also must follow the Constitution. They can't violate people's constitutional rights. But forcing our state and local governments to do certain things because they want us to is unconstitutional as well. And so that's where we'll stand up for the state of California and the cities and counties of our state.
How will your administration or policies differ in contrast to your predecessor?
She's a little bit more attractive than I am, and... She probably is a little smarter than me. She's younger than me. But otherwise, I think you're going to find that when it comes to the values, very similar. Kamala Harris and I are good friends. We support each other. We continue to have conversations. Now she is Senator, and now I as the Attorney General, serving out the remainder of her four-year term. I believe you're going to find it's like candy and glove when it comes to many of these issues that are important, where you will need to have the U.S. Senator and the California Attorney General working on issues together. So, pretty good, pretty good. I feel kind of odd. I used to do town halls all the time when I was in Congress, and I would, it would come directly from the audience. I feel like I'm sort of distant. I feel like I should be sitting with you and touching and... Come on down. I feel like I'm in one of those cages and I...
Can you update us on the status of the development of the rules and forms for data collection, for racial profiling data collection law?
Yeah, so we're likely, I think weeks, plural may be too many, too much, but we're close. We're very close to issuing the regulations that will implement the law that passed a couple of years ago that said that law enforcement must track its contacts with citizens, with the people of our state, when they're stopped. And the purpose of that is to begin to collect evidence, data, information, that can help us understand the character of the stop and the nature of the basis for the stop. And hopefully, from there, we can start to see if there is evidence of racial profiling or not. I also think it's going to give us a chance to come out with best practices on how we make sure we train law enforcement with regard to many of these stops. It's an important legislation. The regulations were actually supposed to be issued at the beginning of 2017, but with the transition of then Attorney General Harris and my confirmation process, and then becoming the A.G., there was a lull. And I chose, because there was, quite honestly, great concern on the part of a number of, especially in law enforcement, but on both sides, concern with the regs that were getting ready to issue, had issued actually back in 2016. I pulled back, and I told them, "I'm going to give them another scrub." And so we're ready now to issue, and we've gotten cooperation from the author of the original legislation to help us move back the dates of implementation, so we don't run up against problems with local law enforcement who have to implement this. And so I think it's going to work okay. We've been talking a whole lot with folks in the community, the advocacy organizations that were proponents of the legislation, and of course, with law enforcement to get their feedback, so we can make this work. As I've said to all sides, because this is one of those very difficult issues, at the end of the day, what I want is for something that's going to work. I can't afford, in a year or two, for us to say, "We learned nothing," because then we'll never really get to pursue this issue. And I think for too many communities in California, we need answers.
Following your steps to prevent the Muslim ban by the Trump administration, what is the state Department of Justice doing, and what are you doing to work with and protect religious minorities from hate crimes? Does the Attorney General consult leading religious or social justice leaders in developing greater civil and political engagement?
Early on, right after the Muslim travel ban was issued by the Trump administration, we did meet with and communicate with leaders from various communities that were targeted. We worked closely with various states, and even with some of our local jurisdictions, to file actions in court. to file actions in court to challenge the travel ban. And although it's based on federal law, not on state law, because again, you're talking now about immigration, about allowing people to come into the country, we had a basis to go in, because, as I said before, the federal government doesn't have a right to violate the Constitution. And so, we'll continue to do what we have to do, to make sure that discrimination isn't part of what our institutions do. And so, whether it's the Muslim travel ban, or states enacting laws that discriminate against people who are LGBT, we're going to make sure that we make it clear that, at least in California, we're not going to be part of that. And so, we are in court right now. We'll see where this goes. You know, I have less faith that the Supreme Court sees it the way I do, but I hope what the Supreme Court recognizes is that we should not be in the business of institutionalizing discrimination, at least not in the 21st century.
What can be done to reduce the risk of discrimination in the workplace and in employment? At first, we had discrimination based on color, then gender, now language.
First, I think we have to make sure we're enforcing our labor laws, and protecting people's rights when they work. When you find it easy to exploit someone because of their status, or who they look like, and you end up paying them less, that makes it harder for another business to try to be competitive, and have to feel like, "Well, in order for me to compete, I got to figure out a way to undercut wages here as well, and maybe reduce the rights in the workplace." So, I think if we were to just follow some of the basic laws that we have, we would do a much better job of avoiding discrimination. Part of it, of course, is also attitude, right? It's our values. And that, well, that should have been taught from the cradle, and it's a little bit more difficult, that's... How much government can do to change someone's morality is another question. But that's, again, where I think we have to enlist your help, because we work with each other day in, day out, and we see some of this stuff. One of the most important things people can do is report incidents where people have been mistreated, or discriminated, or harassed, because sometimes it's tough for these victims to feel comfortable coming forward. I'm working on some cases involving child sex abuse, and you know how tough it is for kids to come forward. It's worse when you know that there are adults who knew about this who didn't come forward as well. That's the tough part. And so, if we just did our part, it'd make it tougher for people to get away with doing this stuff. We've got some pretty decent laws in place, and so long as you don't go to certain parts of the country where they don't really respect those laws in enforcing them, you can, you can get decent treatment. California, we're, we're pretty good at making sure that we try to enforce our anti-discrimination laws. I feel like I'm in church, guys. I apologize.
In your introductory speech, you mentioned wanting people to be able to retire with dignity. How are you working to make the climate livable by the time my one-year-old grandson can retire with dignity?
I would tell you, we're doing two things in particular. I have probably filed more actions to defend California against some of the steps that have been taken, measures that have been taken at the, at the federal level, on the environment than anything else. We have challenged the administration's actions on methane gas. We are defending the Clean Power Plan that was reached with the federal government. We are continuing to back the governor and defend the governor when it comes to continuing as part of the Paris Climate Accords. We have, we had a challenge, we have to sue the Department of Energy, so that they'll live up to enforcement of energy-efficient light bulbs. They've decided to abandon the effort to move forward with the rules on energy-efficient light bulbs, on energy-efficient fans. They're abandoning all those efforts. We had to sue the Department of Interior because it wanted to allow relaxation of standards of how you transport natural resources from one place to another. And here, you can imagine, when you put coal in the back of a freight train, and it's uncovered, and you're traveling at speeds of 40 miles an hour on these trains, that coal releases dust. Maybe you and I don't live where some of these freight rail transport occur, but there are a lot of communities, mostly low-income communities, mostly communities of color, who are the ones who have their kids breathing in that coal dust, because the rules are going to be relaxed, that would say you don't have to cover these freight cars, or you don't have to worry about the amount of dust that you're releasing into the air. Simple things like that, we're having to go after the administration on. We're preparing a number of other actions. I just, this week, filed an action against Valero, challenging them on anti-competitive, antitrust grounds. They are trying to buy two terminals that distribute petroleum up in the Bay Area. And because California has different formulated gas, you know how always we have these spike in gas prices? Well, that gas can only be distributed in, from certain places. Those terminals, there's only one remaining independent terminal that distributes the gas from these producers of the gas, to give to the distributors of the gas. Well, one of the distributors, Valero, wants to buy the two remaining independent terminals. Once they do that, it's like having your hand on the spigot. You control who gets it and when they get it. And when you can do that, you control prices that consumers pay at the pump. The difficulty is going to be here, that it's not a horizontal integration of companies, where you're eliminating a competitor by gobbling it up. This is what they call vertical integration, because it's two different industries, the producers, the distributors, the marketers. Here, actually, Valero is both the producer and distributor, is trying to gobble up one of the, the retailer and producer is trying to gobble up one of the distributors, and control the spigot. We're going to fight them. Will we win? We're going to do our darndest, because if we don't, you'll be seeing higher gas prices. So, we are in the environmental space big. I am not interested in letting my daughters, or your grandkids, not be able to drink the water that comes out of the tap, or breathe the air that is outside. And so, we're going to do everything we can.
California has a big border with Mexico. What can California do to prevent building the huge Trump border wall?
That's what I'm dealing with. That's what I'm dealing with. We're getting ready to have to deal with this as well. It's not a done deal, that they'll be able to do this. They still have to get the money, and it's not coming from Mexico, by the way. It's coming from you all. Yeah. Congress is going to take taxpayer dollars, and right now, they got about a billion dollars in the House Republican Funding Bill to pay for, I think it's a 12 or 13-mile stretch, a billion dollars. And they're trying to waive all sorts of law and regulatory requirements to do something like this. So, I'm hoping that our representatives in Congress and in the Senate can put up a fight to make sure that that doesn't happen. But if that fails, then we're, we're ready, whatever we need to do, to try to defend the interests of our state against something like that. It's crazy, guys.
How are you working with your colleagues in bordering states like Washington and Oregon and elsewhere to ensure that state laws governing the use of cannabis are respected by this administration?
Now, we've had, you know, one of the great things landing in this position is the relationship with the attorneys general from throughout the country. R and D, R and D. There are only 51 of us, the District of Columbia being the 51st. So, there aren't that many of us. But that's been really rewarding. On cannabis, the eight or nine states that have taken some action to do either medical marijuana or recreational, we've had conversation. I think we all sort of recognize that much depends on how aggressive the federal government decides it wants to be. But I've said that the people in California spoke, we're going to, I'm going to enforce the laws that we have in our state, that now legalize the small quantities of marijuana, allow us to engage lawfully in the sale and distribution of that, so long as it's regulated. And I'm going to be there, as I said, have the backs of California as it moves forward. We'll have to have regulations. The cities and counties will be involved in helping draft what regulations will work, because everyone has to feel comfortable with the way this moves forward. We have to make sure that the growing industry respects the laws that we have, including environmental laws. And so, I'm going to do everything I can to make sure that we move forward. I think it's just much smarter to regulate, not criminalize marijuana. And so, we're going to do everything we can. And one final note, in terms of the working relationship with some of these attorneys general. I just, yesterday, did a conference, press conference call with the Attorney General from Massachusetts, Mara Healy, who has been one of the big defenders of immigrants in her state as well. We've done a number of actions with Attorney General Healy. The day before that, I was speaking to the Attorney General from South Dakota, who is, is trying to find out if there's some way that his state can get itself removed from this list that we, that I have issued of states that are prohibited from having taxpayer-paid government travel to his state, because of the state law that his legislature passed, which discriminates against LGBTQ. I was speaking to the AG from Kentucky, who also would like to find a way to get off the list. I had conversations not long ago with the Attorney General from the state of Washington, not on this matter, but on another matter. And it's great. I've been constant communication with the Attorney General from New York. And so, it's, it's been helpful to have that dialogue, because you feel like you got a team. And if you take a look at most of these actions that California has instituted, we were the principal state, I was, I was the lead on an action that we filed to defend the Affordable Care Act, and the subsidies that are provided to people so they can, so you can afford the insurance, the subsidies that help make the copayments, the co-insurance, and the deductibles affordable. There's an attack against those that was commenced by the House Republicans two years ago. They sued to say that those should not be funded. And at that time, the defender of the Affordable Care Act was the Department of Health and Human Services under Barack Obama. Now, the defender of the Affordable Care Act in court is Donald Trump. And so, forgive me if you don't, if I don't trust that Donald Trump's administration will defend the Affordable Care Act. So, we have chosen, with the help of some 17 attorneys general, to go in and file, to intervene in that case, to defend the Affordable Care Act, because we don't trust that the federal government will defend the Affordable Care Act, and the subsidies that make the insurance plans affordable. So, it's been great to work with these AGs, and I hope that doesn't stop. But it, as I said, it's both R and D in many cases that we've been able to work together. And if it's okay, if I can violate the rule a little bit, and maybe, I'd like to ask a couple of sort of like poll questions, where you don't have to answer verbally, but maybe just for the show of hands.
They said it's okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So, reforming the bail system and eliminating the money bail system will go a long way towards economic and social justice. That said, there are many perceived risks to public safety that many attribute to this kind of reform. What do you believe state and local officials will need to do to implement bail reform in a safe and effective manner?
And here, I know Assemblymember Holden probably can give a much better answer than I will, because I know he's been working this with Senator Hertzberg and those members who have been part of this effort. And I just finished a conversation earlier today with District Attorney Jackie Lacy on this, on this matter as well. Let me begin by telling you my personal thoughts. When someone commits a crime, or we suspect they've committed a crime, we have a right, as a people, to make sure that they're not able to do it again. And while we provide them with their constitutional rights to a just trial, we have a right to make sure that while they have not yet been found guilty, we can make sure that the public's safety is still provided. The bail system has become unfortunately a system that rewards, in many ways, criminal suspects who are financially able to use the bail system to get released while they're waiting trial, awaiting trial. If you don't have the money to pay a bail, then, and if you're innocent, you're out of luck. And so, I agree with the efforts to reform the bail system. Now, here's the rub, and there's always a rub, right? Where do you stop? At what point do you say you can't afford it? At what point do you say your crime that you've been accused of is not severe enough, that you would be a risk if we allowed you to be released while your trial is pending? That's a tough issue. And as, remember what I said before about law enforcement? We put them in a very difficult spot of trying to figure out how to enforce the law. See, we come up with great ideas. It's like when your kids come up with great ideas, right? But you, you have to tell them, "That's not quite, we can't quite do that that way," right? It's the same thing. Think it through, because someone's got to implement that. And if we're expecting law enforcement to keep the streets safe, and they capture someone who they, now we can suspect, and we're building a case to say they committed a crime, and they go to court, and we charge them, and all of a sudden, they're back out on the street? Every, if I were an officer, I'd think to myself, "What am I doing? I thought I just arrested this guy." And so, there are two sides to the coin. And you got to figure out how you address the unfairness part that's done based on economic status, and the public safety part, where you're respecting that someone risked his or her life to capture that person, and now we have to make sure that that person just isn't back out on the street, and it's a revolving door. We'll, we'll figure out the sweet spot, and we have to figure out the sweet spot. The Constitution requires us to find that sweet spot. But also, public safety, and our need to understand the needs of those who have to enforce public safety, demand that we find that sweet spot. So, I intend to engage with Assemblymember Holden and the legislators, who are trying to come up with a solution on that. And I hope we come up with one soon, because both, we have people who, at the end, we're going to find are, were innocent, who end up spending a whole bunch of time in jail, probably lose their job, probably have a hard time finding a job in, in the future because of the stigma, even though they're released. And at the same time, no one in this room wants to find that their loved one became the victim of a crime, because we had a bail system that changed and allowed someone to be released that really should not have. be released that really should not have. Got to find that sweet spot. That one's big. That one's big. Might turn to ask a couple of questions? So I'd love to get a feel for where you are on some of these issues. If I could ask the first question, let me see if I can phrase it in a way.
Sir, I'm going to interrupt you for one moment. My dear friend, it makes me...
Please, let's go right to it. Councilman?
Thank you. I just can't be in this room without talking. It seems, you know, so...
I know.
Javier, mainly, I wanted to just thank you for your service. I mentioned before that you were my Assembly Member back in Monterey Park. I think I said it was 100 years ago. It might have been a little less than that. And you weren't supposed to win that seat, if you remember. And you worked so hard and did a great job in the Assembly, and then in the Congress. And we're grateful that you gave up a congressional seat that was yours as long as you wanted it, to come back to California and fight for working families. So we're very grateful. And I just wanted to mention that we had another great Attorney General here in Pasadena, John Vandykamp. And we just named a bridge for him in West Bend. Mayor Tornick and my colleagues supported the renaming of the La Loma Bridge. And I was sitting here wondering, did you work with John when you were in the AG's office? You must, maybe a word or two that you could share about John, and thank you again for your service.
Councilmember, thank you for raising that. I served, I worked, I was a Deputy Attorney General for four years, and I served under John Vandykamp. When I ran for the State Assembly, and I sort of came out of the blue to run for the State Assembly, the only person who would endorse me was John Vandykamp. And he did it, and this is 1990, he did it while he was running for governor at that time. And the courageous thing about that was that I was not sort of the anointed, one of the anointed candidates. There was the chief of staff to the Assembly member who was departing, the departing Assembly member who was running, so the chief of staff had a lot of support. And there was the daughter of the sitting member of Congress who was running. They were the two who were supposed to go at it. Here comes this Deputy Attorney General, sort of mucks it up, and John, taking a chance because he's seeking support and endorsements from all these folks, including the members of Congress and these Assembly members, endorses me. And I, you know, there was, no one expected that I would win. So Steve, you're absolutely right. And when Governor Brown asked me to take the position and nominated me, well, after it became public, my first call to seek guidance was to John Vandykamp. And he was very gracious. I had several conversations with him in the months leading up to my confirmation. And I was saddened and surprised when I heard the news as well of his passing. He was a great guy. You know, he was, he was, he really was a public servant, in the best tradition. So I was blessed to be able to serve with him and have his friendship. Thanks for bringing that up. By the way, I had the support of every one of the previous AGs, starting with John Vandykamp, including Dan Lundgren, who's a friend, good friend of mine. And while Dan and I are polar opposites when it comes to where we stand on the issues, you're fortunate to develop some really strong relationships with folks. If you go beyond just the politics, and Dan and I, I asked Dan to help on the issue of immigration when we were in Congress, if he would help try to come up with a solution. I knew we didn't agree, but I knew he knew the subject some. And so, I asked him to be part of this working group that we formed, that was similar to the Senate Gang of Eight Working Group. And he was very good about participating and very constructive in his guidance. So my, real quick, so a couple of quick questions. I'd love to get a sense of how you feel about the priorities of the state of California. We are so far ahead of most of the rest of the nation when it comes to, well, just about anything. Criminal justice, environment, consumer protection. So now, we're under assault, and there's a chance that much of what we've done, because it's based on having gotten waivers from the federal government, to go beyond what the federal government requires, may be in jeopardy. So the first question I would ask is, how many of you believe that California should fight to stay on the same course it's been on, or try to accommodate the Trump administration and yield on some of these initiatives that we've set our sights on and moved forward on, whether it's environment, criminal justice reform? So I guess I'm asking, do we ease back and accept that the feds are saying, pull back, or just move forward? Okay. So how many say move forward? How many say yield and slow down? Okay, thank God. Okay. And I didn't pay a penny. The second question goes to Paying a Penny. How many of you believe that we need to change our election systems where it's based so much on money? And so, my question would be to you, how many of you believe, I won't go into, because we all know about money and all the rest, that we should have ways to limit the amount of money in politics, whether it's public financing, or whatever, limits on donations? How many believe that we have a right, or should have a right, to limit the amount of money in our electoral system? Yes, yes, you agree. Okay, now, let me take, let's see if there are any brave nose. Come on, any brave nose? Okay. There's a Councilmember, Kennedy.
There's a way to go around this.
Yeah. Well, see, that's the thing, there's always ways to go around, but, but you got to try. Got to try, got to try. But, okay, if you all are attest of California, then I'm happy, I'm happy. We could get into it, but I know time has run out. I want to thank all of you for being so... Hey, I wish my daughters had been here to watch this, because, you know, like you tell your kids, you have to be really respectful. You all are really good. Pasadena, you've been great. As I mentioned to the Assembly Member, you invite, I will come. I think it's fantastic that you took the time to be here. Thank you so much for letting me be part of it.
We've got something for you. I think it's safe to say that we're in good hands with our Attorney General. He is, say, I was just sitting here listening to how you're answering the questions in your relaxed style, and your clarity, and your recollection of the history and the law, and it really, the sensitivity of how you connect to the issues that I think so many of us care about. And so, I got to just say this, I hope someday that my bills land on your desk. I'm just saying, that's just for me. But I also wanted to, we have a gift for you. I guess this is from the city of Pasadena and for myself. It's a little place down in the Royal Seiko, where they play football every January 1st and UCLA games. But this is the history of the Rose Bowl, and we wanted to make sure that you had a little piece of Pasadena in your office. And just know that this city is very supportive of you. I know that the mayor and the council, the community of Pasadena is in great hands, but knowing that you're the backstop on a lot of the issues that this city tries to be aggressive and push the envelope on, that you have the right mindset to see their point of view and be supportive of it. So we thank you for your leadership, and we look forward to many, many years of your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And now that we have more council members, I think the mayor might want to, along with Kennedy and Jim, Steve.
Can we get all the council members to come forward, please, for photo?